We're going to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with Pastor Steve. You want to do the prayer? If you can, please.
Father in heaven, we want to begin this new year by just praising you for who you are as our God, our Creator, who was and is and is to come. We're thankful for your son, Jesus Christ, our Redeemer and our Savior of the whole world. Lord, as we go into this year, we just will seek your help. We seek your guidance. We pray for wisdom and help in these meetings here and pray for our community, dear Lord, that you would lead and guide and direct us, dear Lord, in the direction that we need to go and decisions that need to be made. And Lord, so we look to you for our help. Would you lead and guide us? We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Will you pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who have the clerk calling? And the real cop. Okay, first of all, I want to welcome Gary and Jim to council.
Welcome.
Welcome, yes.
Okay, so Mike Amy.
Present.
Debbie McGinley.
Here.
Jim McLean.
Here.
Gary Cole.
Present.
And Jim Keane.
Here.
All right, so everybody has the minutes. And there's two sets, if you'll notice. One was for our regular December meeting. And then on the backside is our salary ordinance meeting that we have. So I'll ask you to sign both. Now, the new, you guys won't be able to sign the minutes, but you can sign claims. So, um, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have claims.
I'll make a motion, we accept the claims.
Six.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the financials.
I make a motion, we accept the financials.
I'll second that.
Awesome. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That sums up my beginning. Now, we're going to have a election of officers.
Um, I'll make a motion, we, um, name Jim McLean president.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, so do you want to be president?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So Debbie's made motion and Jim Keane, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I should have said any, right?
So now you can take over and do your vice president.
All right, we'll accept nominations for a vice president at this point.
I'll make a motion, we, um, ask Mike Amy to be our vice president.
Second, anybody?
Second.
You interested, Mike?
I'll, I'll take the job.
Somebody's trying to do it.
All right, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, and we'll start the meeting then with our public hearing with the Health Project and Mike Klein Peter.
Good evening, council. Good evening, public. Mike Klein Peter with Klein Peter Consulting Group. Notice this public hearing was posted in the Palladium item on December 26th. This is our second public hearing to discuss the town's application for grant funding through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. The Wayne County Commissioners received a Help Grant from Okra in the amount of $1 million. They have allocated $450,000 to the town for this park project. So in total, it'll be $450,000 in grant funding and will be contributing $180,000 in matching funds. These matching funds will consist of $150,000 from the ARPA fund, $25,000 from the Sugar Creek Packing Company, and $5,000 from the Wayne County Tourism Bureau. This is different than we advertised in the newspaper. We did advertise $236,400 in non-CDPG funds, which would have been $119,000 of ARPA, $25,000 of Sugar Creek Packing Company, $5,000 from the Tourism Borough, and $87,400 in donations. Therefore, we've reduced the scope by about $56,400. Some of you might want to know, what are we cutting out of the project if we reduce scope? Uh, we had a contingency of 15% built-in, so now we have approximately a 5% contingency. However, I know there's, uh, some discussion about doing some fundraising to build that construction fund back up. Jim, do you want to talk about that at all here? Or you only?
I can or wait till you're finished or whatever.
Uh, so we want residents to be aware of the project and have an opportunity to voice any concern or support for the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cecil to talk about the project.
One of those, twenty-one. Maybe one that shows the overall. Um, just so everybody knows kind of where the project site is located, everybody, I assume, is familiar with Cambridge City Fire Station. So, uh, as you guys may or may not know, there's a large green lawn area just to the north of the fire station that's, uh, currently vacant. It's just a lawn, however, it is used throughout the year for various activities. So what the town is looking to do is to create or establish a more permanent pavilion or shade structure that they can use to program musical events, potentially movies on the lawn or other events that they can host here in town. So, uh, what we're trying to do is basically work with the existing fire station. There's a lot of utilities that are already serviced, uh, serviced there, but essentially create a new shelter that would be immediately adjacent to that. It would have some provisions, utilities that would be a part of that, that would allow, uh, musical performances to occur. And already, they have musical performances on a regular basis during the summer. So we're, uh, looking at ways that we can allow them to have direct access to electricity for, um, for sound and for lighting that might be occurring with any performances. But essentially what we've got here is we're establishing some areas, a hardscape. Performers could perform beneath that. This hardscape could serve as a dance floor, it could serve as seating for those who may have disabilities or mobility issues. Um, and then essentially what we're looking at creating is, uh, some, uh, some lighting kind of around the perimeter of the site so that during the evening, uh, it can be illuminated, allow people to get in and out, um, carefully, um, after an event. Uh, we've also got an area over here that, uh, could be kind of a more of an informal seating area with some movable tables and chairs. There are also outdoor game tables that can be put there like ping pong or foosball. They make all kinds of outdoor tables or cornhole. And then essentially, we're just trying to set up provisions so that we've established kind of a circuit around the, around the space, but, um, maybe a small pull-off parking area where there could be food trucks. Uh, so we're looking at how we can get power out there so that during an event, if they wanted to have food trucks set up there, excuse me, people who are attending a performance could go out and, you know, access food or, or drink there. And then we also have a small, uh, parking area that would be located off of Green Street that would allow people to pull in. This is still kind of a conceptual rendering at this stage. We're beginning to work through, uh, more definitive drawings, uh, and trying to refine the design. Um, I'm a landscape architect, uh, from Cambridge, the Cambridge City area. My mailing address is Milton. But, uh, anyway, I'm, my, our firm is donating our time for the site, uh, design, and then we've actually are working with, um, Brianna Wetzel, formerly Brianna Newton, make her main name is Newton, and she's assisting us with the design of the structure. So we're trying to do as much of the design, uh, uh, through donation as possible so that we can keep the cost of, uh, cost of the project down and put all of our money into construction. Any questions? Appreciate your efforts, Cecil.
So I'll speak quickly about fundraising. We did vote late last year to, uh, fundraise for this effort and because ideally, this is phase one of the project and ideally, we'd like to do vote in phase one and phase two, and if we can raise enough funds, perhaps we can go ahead and do them all at one time. So, um, we really can't, uh, go full scale on a fundraising effort until we have the renderings and stuff that we can, you know, take a package out to the people. I have had some preliminary conversations with some people regarding it and, uh, it's all looked at very favorably around the county. So I think we'll be successful in raising some funds for this. So the idea is any funds we raise, then we'll, you know, reduce the amount we'd have to pull from our ARPA funds, so.
Yeah, and these Okra grants require at the time of application, which is going to be next Friday, June 19th, that we have all funds secured to move the project forward. And that's why the ARPA funds were increased some, so we have funds secured to move the project forward. We have enough to make it go. So that's why, just so you know, that we got to have them by this Friday, and so that's why we reduced the scope down initially to make sure we had enough funds to keep the project moving. Because if we miss next Friday's deadline, then we're not eligible to get the $450,000 anymore, so. Um, that's kind of where we are. We've got a lot of resident input, so I appreciate that. Okra does look at the resident input, input for projects like this. So that's all I have. Jim, thank you.
Is there any questions from anybody?
Mr. Jim, are you looking at any naming rights as part of your fundraising out there for these? Because I found that to be helpful in some other.
Yeah, I think that's going to be discussed, yeah. That might be one level of, of the, yeah. Appreciate that. The thing we'd have to watch, of course, is that, you know, Sugar Creek's already put $25,000 in, so obviously, if you do any naming rights, you'd have to take that into consideration. Yeah. Any other questions? Do we, what do we need to do this evening?
So this evening, you have a resolution Cherry has to pass, and then I've got some forms for you to sign, Jim.
Does everybody have this resolution?
Yes, I, I am.
Is that to increase the ARPA available funds?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So. Now, Mike, would you ever be able to reduce, take back some of those ARPA funds if you did have successful fundraising or not?
Yes, Bob. So what's going to happen is the council's pledging this money moving forward. If we raise a bunch of donations and we need to use less ARPA funds, when we get to what's called release of funds from Okra, they say, "Mike, how are, how is the town going to pay for this?" And I list everybody's contract, the construction contract, for the total amount. At that point, I can change and say, "Hey, we no longer want to use as much ARPA, we now want to use donations."
We can back off if some other.
Right. I just, I just have to, when we apply and we say we're going to come in with $180,000, we have to make sure we at least hit that in some form. We can't go down. We can't only do 120.
Sure.
We got to hit the 180. But I can change the fund of where it comes from.
So we're just actually just pledging funds towards that? It's not actually being transferred to any place or?
Correct.
That we're just, okay. Just within our own, it's being transferred within our own. Right, okay.
So I'm looking for a motion for, uh?
Resolution one, version 24.
Which one's one?
This will be one.
I have three, four, five.
It came in your email. You guys thought it, you have a day with your.
Yep. So just so everybody knows, that resolution there authorizes me to submit the application. The other thing it does is it commits our local match, um, a number two here. Commits the, the town of Cambridge City hereby commits the required local match in the amount of $180,000 in the form of $150,000 in ARPA, $5,000 from the Wayne County Tourism Board, $25,000 from the Sugar Creek Packing Company as funds for this project. Such funds are contingent upon receipt of an Okra Help Grant. So if Okra doesn't give us the grant, then you guys are not committed. But being that the normal process, you got to compete to get these process, funds. But since this is help money, it's already allocated to us.
Bob?
Yeah, I understood. You're just increasing that. You'd already approved 119 of ARPA, but that was in hopes of that fundraising, so now this has gone up to the 150.
But the intent is to?
Hopefully not.
Do the fundraising.
Yeah.
The intent is to back that back down.
Just making a pledge, basically.
Well, I'll make a motion, we accept resolution one.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. Okay.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution one, twenty twenty-four. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passed.
Okay, I'll just say it, Chris, Jim. Bob's already looked at these forms. This authorizes me to submit the application.
He's not radaring me, is he, Bob?
No.
This says here, we're going to be submitting a grant for $450,000. You're going to sign here?
You're personally guaranteeing that the double.
Radar, but it's assigned.
This is saying the town didn't get more than 80% of its revenue in grants, and we need some 25 million or more in grants.
That's easy, Miss.
Yeah, I've always been easy on the sign. This, uh, authorizes me to take public hearing minutes for tonight. Almost done. This, uh, is called a four-factor analysis. There was over a thousand people in the county that speak a language other than English according to the census data table that Okra tells us to use, which is the 2,000 census table. That's what they want us to use, so that's what we did. Bob, do you want to talk about the signature page and the land acquisition? Or how do you want to handle that? Is that, do you want me to talk about that?
I mean, we can't. I mean, we're not there yet.
Right.
We are hopeful and projecting to be there by the deadline.
And this is the last one. You're going to sign this saying, "We got this amount for CARES Act money and spent it at that amount from, uh, ARPA." It's allocated. Yep, Cherry, very funny. And one last thing, Jim, just so you know, there is a form signed that says we have site control of the property. Uh, we can't sign that yet because we're still working through that. Bob's been working with Cecil and?
Gordon Moore is the.
Gordon Moore to get that. Uh, they hope to have it by the 19th, but we may have you coming in saying, "Hey, we got one more form we need to sign."
I can sign that one, too.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I will go ahead and leave that to you, Bob.
Okay. That way, when you feel, when you got whatever we need, you can sign it.
That will probably be it.
But we got to submit by end of Friday.
I thought it was from six. Did you get it on 19?
It's on 19, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I refilled the resume.
It's technically Bob, the 21st is their deadline, but that's a Sunday. And if you try to submit after Friday and if system doesn't work, then you're, you don't have anybody help, you can't call and get help, you know?
Do they ask for any backup proof apart from the signature page or if they just take our?
I have to, uh, I have to upload the deed, uh, which I know we've got one of the deed. If, if we're in town right of way in deed, then we're fine. I think there was that.
That's what I think we're going to find out.
Yes.
That it's right of way, that we're going to abandon that right of way to the town so we actually show ownership of it, so.
Yeah, and so I think, Cecil, you were going to request the deed from?
I think it's already been done. I think Jim's requesting that from Gordon on the fire station itself.
Copy of the deed?
Uh, he, he didn't really ask for the deed for the fire department. He was asked for information about, uh, contracting to have that filled out, but he didn't.
It's a part of his title research, I think, for the survey.
What, he's going to provide a new legal description for the place where the building is right now after the lead search comes in, and I can do the necessary paperwork to show that that has been abandoned right of way to the town. So it's really not going to be a deed, they, there's no grantor that did it to us. It's the town's own right of way that has been abandoned, so the town owns it that way. So hopefully, that's why I ask about what kind of documentation.
If I, if I tell everything, everything's on right of way, then we're okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're speaking truthfully.
Yeah, because I think they're mainly wanting to know, do we have legal access to the property? And I can tell you that we do now, but they'll want to see something.
Yes. I meant, yes.
Town has also maintenance for?
Oh, for, yeah. Between 63 and 66, that's what it was.
Is there going to be something I'll need to sign because I'm going to be out of state? So.
There is a signature page that Bob has.
When are you leaving?
Tomorrow.
Well, that was my question. Will Mike have to sign if he's gone?
He's serving as acting president. That, or the other thing is, you, we could have you sign it now, because I haven't signed it too as legal counsel, and I just won't do anything with it until we know we're good. So if you'll, trust your attorney.
Welcome to your birthday.
But what if something else?
How'd you like to present an hour yet?
What if something else would come up? I mean?
Well, if he's unavailable, the vice president passes it to you.
He, he doesn't have to sign anything to?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'll get you with that.
Okay. All right, well, any other questions or anything before we move on to the next?
Can everybody sign the sign-in sheet?
Do you guys appear sign?
The more people that sign it, the better for us. So if you're in the room, if you could sign, that would be great.
All right, so we'll close out the public hearing.
Okay.
And we'll move on to, uh, the next item, which is consideration of offers, potential sale of a property on Front Street.
Yes, we got one bid. Here.
This was duly advertised in the paper after your meeting last time, saying that this was, you're willing to abandon this property and accept bids on it, but you're not obligated to accept any of them, but that's what happened. And then I also wrote letters to all the adjoining property owners.
All right, I have a bid here from Tommy Pitcher. $200 on the lot, 13 and 14 on block 12. Is that the right one?
Yep.
So as I understand it, we can accept it, we can not accept it.
And if that's the only, yeah, that, or you're also allowed to negotiate with adjoining property owner. Um, it was assessed $1,400. That's what we had to put in notice of the paper and, um, to the adjoining property owners. So you can negotiate with him, you can table it, you can accept it, you can reject it, whatever.
That's what I thought he's already made.
Any questions? Anybody, uh, discuss it?
I'm set.
Round two.
That's perfect, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm all right with it. We have, the town has no use for it, right? At this point.
Because you on both sides now, right?
Yeah.
It's all, but it's all in the flood. Flood's all in.
Well, I need a, uh, some kind of motion to accept that, if that's what you want to do.
I'll make a motion, we accept the bid.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second to accept a bid of $200 from Thomas Pitcher for this property. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Great.
Since we already had a legal description to it, we do not need to do a survey, but I will just do a purchase agreement. Will that just be in your own name?
Yeah.
And so I'll get that to you to sign, then we'll close on that.
Great. And the next item is consideration of proposals. Thanks a lot, Tom. Regarding lease of the ground, uh, adjoining the cemetery, the farm green.
Yep, we have one vote, or one vote. One bid on that as well. Cecil? He couldn't be here tonight. His daughter had surgery there at Riley, so he said if we needed calling, you could call.
It's from R.L. Myers Family Farms, uh, proposal to lease the approximate 16 acres at $150 per acre, which is, I think.
That is the current amount they're paying right now.
Yeah.
And that's for one year, right?
For one year, yeah. So I will accept a motion to accept that if you want to throw it out.
I'll make a motion, we accept Myers' bid for $150 an acre.
Is that technically R.L. Myers Family Farms LLC?
Yes, R.L. Myers Family Farms.
Yep.
And they did send their banking, that they were covered for it.
All right.
Who seconded it? I'm sorry, Gary?
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That would pass.
Great. I'll let you know.
And I'll prepare the lease.
Thanks.
Be similar to what they have, well, just for one year.
Um, next, we'll, um, go to our guest, Darlene Roberts. And I understand she couldn't be here tonight regarding the properties of 411, 415, West Front Street. Just a second, we'll get to you, okay? Ken, I don't know if you want to talk about what we've, uh?
Okay, well, I, when I got here tonight, there was a message on the machine that she's back in the hospital. And she, she had called me, it was after, she'd got the letters after the last meeting, and was asking what she could do, and I said, you know, talking to me about what she could do, I said, "Well," I told her, "It's really out of my hands," I said, "'cause I had taken it to the board, council, and they had voted." Uh, my recommendation was for the houses to be tore down, and that's what, they had approved that. And I said, "So," I said, "Really?" I said, "If there's any change or whatever," I said, "You need to talk to the town council to see if they would give you any kind of, you know, extension of doing something with them or whatever." And so she originally was going to come tonight, and I said, "Then I had a message from her daughter that she's back in the hospital." And, um, you know, what I have done, you know, sitting at the last meeting, you guys had asked, you know, these aren't actual, uh, bids for tearing it down. I had talked to a couple of just, just trying to get a feel on what it would cost the town to tear those two houses down. And I got one from Dan Adams. And these are based on just with walking around and looking, you know, without getting in them and actually seeing what kind of base, the basement's like or nothing. But the one at 415, Front Street, he had given a price of, uh, $9,800 to tear it down. And then the one at 411 was $9,000 to tear it down. Um, so that's where we're, you know, like I said, and, you know, I know we're waiting to see what happens with the program, with the county on what we can do to really, you know, once we know what's going on there, then that's when I really go out and make some more contacts on getting some actual bids on tearing it down.
I haven't heard any more about that project. I don't know if you've heard any more about it. No.
So except I did hear today at the EDC meeting that, uh, they're meet, they've met with all the towns and they're putting together their guidelines.
Yeah, they kind of indicated us, it'll be about 90 days before they had any kind of a, uh, answer on that.
That's like I said, so that's where, that's where, the towns end up, that's where we're at right now. It's just, you know, it's idea of what it's going to cost us to tear those houses down.
And the plan program would be just for the tearing down costs? There would be no cost of ownership of the property that should?
Well, it depends on how, because they talked about purchasing the property at, um, the price value, and then the town would then own the property. But I, I don't, they haven't decided what they're going to do yet.
Okay, I just was curious, I mean, these are properties that have been let to be run down like they are, they're, should be of zero value then? But that would be part of the appraisal, right?
Yeah, but I think you'd be hard pressed to pay somebody that you're having incurred money for it there now, because they didn't do it.
That's what I'm, okay.
Yeah, I think just from the way they talk, basically what you're looking at, if you purchase it, it's the value of the land. Is there any value really to that?
Yep. Post-tearing-down building.
Yeah, because the value of the land more than the cost to tear it down.[1730.22] Yeah, because the value of the land more than the cost to tear it down. Those are little bitty lots. I can't imagine it is.
Doubt it.
But I'm sure the program will take into consideration those points, and they'll guide us on that.
Yeah, and that was all part of our discussion, I know, so.
So we'll get further.
Okay, great.
Details on that then.
At least now we know what we're looking at here.
Yeah.
And I understand you're here for the same properties for some?
Yeah, I just, she talked to me about it several different, a couple different times in twenty-three. I've observed them, and basically you've said everything here tonight, that I just, that's exactly what I'd want to do with them, is just, is go ahead and demolish them.
So she's talked to you about selling it, to you?
Yeah.
Could we have your name?
Avery Barrett. Yeah, I've got him, he's down back in my office. And I've talked, I've spoken with Ken, good to meet you, Ken. And it's just, I totally agree, I mean, just, and if, if I was to purchase properties, I would, I would tear them down. The only thing is, I want to ask the town, is it going to be okay with being permitted to be able to rebuild, you know, new homes in there, I mean, for a family benefit?
We've already said they're unsafe right now, so if, I mean, if she would happen to sell to you, you'd be under the same guidelines that she has right now, that you'd have to come negotiate on what you want to do with them.
And tear them down.
So you mean after you tear them down, build a?
To build new?
Yeah, my question to the town is, is, is it would be okay to rebuild, you know, a new home where families can, you know, benefit from them? You know, I'd build a new home.
Have to talk to Ken as far as, you know, our building laws, as far as setbacks, and whether variance would be required or anything.
So your setback and everything should be okay. The thing I'd have to look at is to make sure how wide the lot is, because we do have a thing in our zoning that the lot has to be, I think it's at least fifty feet wide.
And it wouldn't be grandfathered in because there were already homes on those properties, it wouldn't?
I think the only way you could get around that, I've heard this in other places, is to build on the existing foundations.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think that is correct. Once that's down, you can't grandfather that.
Yeah.
Okay, unless, yeah, unless.
But if you, if you tear the house down, and take all the walls of the foundation out and everything, then that's.
So it's not just within the footprint of the original foundation, it has to be the actual structure.
And there have been some towns where people have gotten very creative and left a couple beams up, so it's a bit of remodeling of that.
Or you could, it could be made.
So my question is. It sounds like there is opportunity.
If purchased, I just want to know if I agree to.
But keep in mind, we're moving forward to this, so, you know, if she is negotiating with you, she's, she's running out of time.
Okay, see, there is some detail I don't know, and that, what is the timeframe?
Well, right now, we haven't given any timeframe, we're moving forward with getting quotes to tear it down, because it's an unsafe building. Now, you know, we can give her more time, in this instance, I think, the board's kind of waiting on this program from the county to, to see what happens with it, and, you know, that's, that's only sixty more days or something.
Okay, yeah, sixty more days. Well, I mean, I'll let her know I can, and I spoke with Ken, and it kind of fills me in. And I think on that, you know, like, you know, Jim stated, you know, if she would sell the properties between now until we get this, find out how this program's going to work, the guidelines or whatever that we've, that the board's already voted on to have them tore down would carry on to have a bottom, whether it's you or vote somebody else. Well, that's what I want to do immediately, is if I took possession of them, is tear them down. But my main concern is, I want to be able to put, you know, two new homes in there that would benefit, you know, the community.
That's really the ideal option, really.
So, kind of, basically, before I came, I already knew I was in.
Exactly, make one property, you have to.
Yeah, possibly, yeah. Like I said, I'd have to look at the zones.
There's an alley.
I know.
Look and see how wide those lots are.
Yeah, that has to be working now.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll stay in contact with you about it.
Sounds like a great option, if we want to make it happen.
Yeah, yeah, that would be really the ideal option, so.
The only thing is, there's an alley that splits it though, right?
Yeah.
I mean, how would that work then? I mean, that's my question, how would that work, you got an alley there?
I don't think you could vacate it, right, because of the
Right.
access to the other end.
It would be better to make it all one property.
We'd have to look, I mean, you could come and request it to be vacated, but.
We'd have to look to see what, to make sure there's no sewer main running down it or anything. I'd have to, we'd have, I'd have to look in to see if there's, would be any thing to keep us from vacating, right, if it came to that. It just, I don't think she realizes the, all this consists of. It's just like, she keeps thinking she can sell both of them for like $20,000 pieces. No. No, yeah, I mean, you know, do that.
What's going to cost her that much? I mean, you heard what, it's twenty thousand to tear them both down.
Yeah.
And, you know.
So I'll have a talk with her.
We don't want to pay that, so.
I will talk with her, she seemed like she listened to me, so. I thank you all for having me here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that, I mean, I'm pretty much off on my way, but I thank you all, though.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll stay in contact with Ken.
All right, thank you. Next up is Andy, but obviously he hasn't.
Andy's not here.
Two things for council related to the water project. One's just a general update, and the other one is an amendment to our services. Any preference on where I start? Well, the amendment's on the agenda, so I'll start with what's official. This is amendment number four to our contract for one B, construction phase services, specifically to add programming. If council would flip to page two of three of the amendment, it really just cuts down to the nuts and bolts of it. Where are the dollars and what are we programming?
Page one?
Page two.
This was in the package.
So the added cost for this amendment was listed under the industrial park water system, under programming, for an additional $15,000. I wanted to jump to the compensation section, just because I'm not loving how it ended up looking. It looks like we're adding $25,000 and $15,000, but I wanted to clarify what the case was. Under the in-town water system, that increase of $25,000 was the shuffle we did when we moved leftover fees from one A to one B. When we closed off that project, we had some dollars left, and we said, hey, it's grants, we can keep it, we transferred it over. This is just the first time we've had the opportunity to get that recorded down.
To show it on paper.
Yep. So the scope is programming the filter backwash panel, the industrial park. If you recall, this is a manufacturer's filter panel, and in order to rebuild it or do work on it, we're going to eBay and using duct tape and staples. Any questions? I guess I should remind council that there is a construction contingency on this project and the other one, and we've not even touched those for either of those, so we're in very good shape when it comes to finances.
This has Steve's name on it.
Does it still? We can, I'd be okay striking it, if Bob is okay with that?
It's got Steve's name as a sign.
Yeah, we can do.
Do we need a motion to approve this amendment?
Please.
Yeah, if somebody wants to offer that.
I'm not sure what the language is.
Are we approving the amendment for the programming services for the filter backwash panel?
I'll make a motion that we approve the program, the services for the filter backwash panel.
I'll second.
And that's amendment number four, as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
And opposed?
Appreciate it. And the other item is just a general update on the water project. I haven't had a chance to come talk to you guys in a few months, so I wanted to just let you know where things stand. One A, the water main work in-town, that project is completed, closed out, final documents have been delivered to Ken. As far as I know, final payment's been provided to contractor, so that's put and done, completed. One B is a different story. One B, just for council's knowledge, is the industrial park, adding the well, rehabbing the filters, doing a new skater system out there, and then also a new skater system in-town, with some rehabilitation work on the in-town wells. We had a progress meeting for this last Thursday, and that's, I had sent council the minutes from that progress meeting, and in summary, I would say the majority of the work items weren't completed as the contractor had anticipated. So I requested the contractor update their schedules, provide something realistic. Wanted to bring that to council's attention, just because this is that project where we had to assess some partial liquidated damages for not completing the project on time. And based on what I've seen this past month, I don't necessarily see the progress that the contractor had expected they would have made. So wanted to inform council of that, and perhaps recommend it might be good timing to remind the contractor of the situation that they're in, that should we elect to proceed with it, we'll assess liquidated damages on that.
They've already been written ones on October thirty-first, you may recall, they had asked for a ninety-day extension of time. We deny that in the sense that, what they want to take ninety days, that's fine, but we're not going to waive their penalty, though we would agree to cut that in half. Instead of $1,400 per day, we would say we would give them $700 per day. And then to start January the fourth, was when it was supposed to be substantially completed, and then finally completed on February the third. And so we said that if they got it done within that other ninety days, we'd only charge them $700 per day. If it went beyond that, we reserved the right to go back up to that $1,400 per day penalty. And you might recall that even though it was not causing us significant damage at the time, what we were hoping would happen is that we put a PS on that saying, oh, by the way, we've accepted your bid for $14,480 about some valve work, that they might say, well, hey, look, why don't we do that valve work instead of you giving us the penalty? They did, in fact, they haven't responded at all to me.
And they charged more than the $14,000.
Yeah, and they in fact charged more than the bid. So I think at this time, we sit there and say, well, you did not do what you, and maybe that's the type of letter I could send now. Well, January fourth has come and gone, you did not get substantially completed, that penalty is in effect right now, and if you don't get it done during this ninety, ninety days, we will up it to what we are allowed to do, and that's the $1,400 per day. I know that's playing some hardball, but they did not respond favorably.
In fairness to both parties, you know, the first request, the contractor stated, well, there's not any additional cost to be incurred. Well, if we continue to extend the contract, there may be additional costs that will be incurred. In engineering for this particular pocket, we do have $60,000, which implies us a little over four months. But looking at the schedule, I don't know if they'll finish in four months. So I think it's a two-step process, where we need to understand what they actually anticipate their schedule being, because currently, we do not know. So I think having a better handle on that in tandem with what.
And if I read it correctly, I'm not sure additional costs are required in order to impose the penalty.
No, they're not required, but just as a background that you probably will incur additional costs if this continues to get extended.
So, if I could jump in real quick, Mike Klein, Peter Klein, here at consulting, we're doing certified payroll compliance in this project. So we budgeted a certain amount of money through this to check certified payroll, so as it runs long, you know, we don't know how long yet, but as it runs long, I want to make the council aware there could be an amendment to our contract. That's why you need to impose liquidated damages, and so you don't have to eat that extra cost for the project running long.
So then I don't want to pay the additional invoice that Ken received on that work on that valve, right? Because it's.
No, it's actually two separate things.
Okay.
Well, it's a, it's a separate thing, but it's another legal question. If they gave a bid for that, and I wasn't part of what Ken was doing, and they are now trying to quote higher than that bid, I'm not sure why we are justified having to pay more than what their bid, that's why you take bids.
Yeah.
So you know that that's why you.
You're taking budget for that, right?
When digging that up, found more of a mess of what we thought.
But they didn't come back with another quote, though, right? I mean, they just did the.
Well, they leave themselves out when they gave you the bid, Ken, that if unforeseen circumstances were found, they could charge more?
I don't remember what was all in that, I mean, that, that price they gave me was for putting, putting a valve in. And when they got it dug up, we found, you know, we could not find any valves, we found valves buried two feet deep. And that line going to the building was being fed by a six-inch and a ten-inch, and there was no way to separate them. So we had to put a line stop in, get a valve in, in, so we could shut the flow from the six-inch from coming in.
So is that stuff we had to do in order to make it possible for them to put the valve in?
No. To be able to shut that building down while we were putting the valve in to begin with.
Right.
To be able to get that building shut down, we had to add another valve.
But that would, would that be on us, though, because they were only contracting to put the valve in?
They were, they only, that, that price they gave me was for putting in the one valve. So when it came to having to put another valve in, that, that, that still comes onto our, our cost to do that.
So the work that they were required to do was greater than what they had quoted to do, which therefore they would justify was then charging more. If that's the case, then we, we might be expected to pay more. If their work, if the scope of their work changed, then the scope of their payment could also change.
Right. Outside of that scope of work, actually, they should have come back here.
To that, you know, you know, time called, units of those things, you know, in my position, I have to make a field judgment.
Right.
I agree, but Ken, mentally, you should, you should let council know that that's, that's happened, I mean, honestly.
That's a lot of money.
So that we're not.
What was the difference?
$10,000.
Surprised by it, you know, because I know I was shocked by it, so.
It just, you know, what just became a bigger ordeal than what, you know, in towns that he's never seen.
Right, we, we talked about the fact that there was no way to shut off that building.
Yeah, and along the way, those two lines were tied in, he's never seen that tied in like that.
We don't know when that was.
So, a broad question on this, this, this vendor is a good partner for the town.
Yeah.
We depend on them heavily. And Ken needs some, who, who on the board, isn't there a water commissioner, who's responsible for him to come see, to help him in the relationship management with Cooley, or the vendor?
Well, we made Mike know that, figure out how it works.
Just last month, I was.
Okay, well, it's not a blanket, I just wanted to know who he should work with.
Right, it'd be me, it will be me, yeah, public works.
Yeah, that's what you and Mike has already done.
So then you can help with the relationship.
Yeah, we've already sat down and talked about all this, and then we're going to meet once a month in between, about halfway somewhere, in between the two council meetings, so that we can make sure that we're making progress, and if, and if there is anything like this to report, we'll know about it.
That's great, Mike, because I know Ken could really benefit from that guidance.
It's going to help, I think, everybody.
Yeah, we, we want to keep them happy as well.
What sounds like, to answer, curious initial question, do we pay it? That it sounds like the scope of the work did change, that scope was authorized by Ken, and if that's a reasonable price for that additional work, I'm not sure how we get away from paying it.
And I, you know, and just from things, what, you know, the scope of the work, what they did that went on there, to me is a reasonable price for what they.
Well, they'd already started their work when they found this, so you can't just turn around and go back once you've started something like this, I don't think so.
But back to what you're reporting, though, they are not sufficiently accomplishing a project goal, right?
Oh, yeah.
And then there is a potential penalty.
Oh, yeah, which is a different story.
But that, that's a relationship management issue that we should, we should not, we give one, we can't, we can't give every one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what do we, how do we handle it?
I, I think we've given them sufficient, we've given them extra time before, already.
Yeah.
And they've come back for more, and we've given them, what was it, October, we said, you know, we were going to start exercising this, and I think.
We, we provided them that ninety-day grace period, if you will, for a half of the liquidated damages.
And with no response is, is troubling, you know, so.
And that's not, not, not right. Okay, do you need, does Mike need our support that manages, or is this something we go through?
Do we go, what do we need to go forward with it, Bob?
I told you my recommendation.
I think we just make, just make a motion to go ahead and.
Do you need a motion, though?
No, I mean, I think I hear, as long as there's consensus on it, I just don't want to do something that a couple of you say.
Because we've already offered the, the letter saying this is what we're going to do, so now you just need to hear us say that's what we're going to do, right?
Yeah, I don't think we can get out of the $10,000 additional payment if there was an authorization on the ground made by.
Yeah.
So.
So I need a new motion, though, since we approved the $14,000 to pay the additional?
Yeah, I mean, after the fact, again, ideally, as soon as that happened, and maybe it's almost impossible because you're on-site, you don't have a council meeting that night.
Right.
But I think you now retroactively approve the extra payment for that extra work, so that would be an appropriate motion right now. And then that's, that's that issue, and then the other issue, maybe we do have a vote and just say, yes, authorize your attorney to write them saying, okay, that ninety day has now started, and right now, at the end of the ninety days, if you're not done yet, we're likely to give you the, and you can hedge a little bit, but now we're likely to impose the full fine.
$1,400. Maybe start working one close.
And maybe also express a little bit of our disappointment that we haven't heard anything from.
And that's per day?
Yeah, that's per day.
What business say? Or day?
I, maybe.
Whatever, say, bad enough, so.
So let's start with entertaining a motion for the additional cost on the work that was done.
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional cost for the work that was done on the valve.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then I think we can just have a vote on whether we move forward with the $1,400 a day fee, I think, so.
I'm not sure you actually have, since the 90 days isn't up yet. I think right now, it's just authorize a communication to them, saying, "We wish you had responded," and recognizing that the 90 days is now, we're in that 90 days, and we're now imposing that fine right now. So, $700 a day. And that we're likely to consider the full day if you don't get it during this next 90 days.
Let's just do this. Is there any opposition to that?
So moved, if you want to...
Yeah.
My head, now I'll make a motion like yours.
Go ahead.
That authorization for that kind of communication.
Yes.
All right. Somebody second in that?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got some bad news, and they get to finish my update. We started programming the in-town SCADA system today. So, Maxim and Wesler staff are in town getting the code in there and having it running on the new computers and new software. And that's all I have. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On to unfinished business, then. Updates on the Blight properties. We'll start with 14 North Plum Street.
I mean, that 14 North Plum, you know, it's going to be, you know, go by what's it look like, you know? There's daisers, you know, they may have a couple of things out there. And you need to pick that up. But to me, the properties itself, it's not in that bad a shape. You know, they keep it up.
There are worse. They have a habit of setting a lot of trash out.
Yeah. It's different stuff. When you go by every two weeks, and there's different stuff out there. It's not always the same stuff, so I don't know what they're doing, but...
Okay.
You know, I can go by there one time, and there's nothing sitting out there. But then I'll buy another time. Why you throw it out there? So, that's a...
Keep you on your toes.
Yeah.
Is this not on here?
Oh, okay. All right. And then, it's 308 314. Is that Plum Street, too?
No, that's West Main.
West Main. 308 is the house that belongs to the Mears. And I went down the alley, and that backyard is just a mess of all kinds of stuff. And I sent her a letter that it needed to be cleaned up. Has not came back to me yet. There's still a couple of days left before...
So, that's really just a warning?
That is just a warning letter that it needs to get, she needs to get that place cleaned up. Then the next one is the Blue House. I had sent them a letter as a possibility that it could be deemed unsafe just because of, you know, and I put in the letter, back door's open. You know, there's all kinds of stuff just piled on the porch. You know, the porch was rotting away. You know, I just listed all these different things that I'd seen that needed to be, I felt needed to be done to the place. And that letter has not came back yet either, so whether it's got to them or not...
Was that a certified letter?
Yes. And I sort of, at one extent, you know, letters they used that when they sent them out, there was like a 14-day period.
And that's an out-of-state owner, correct?
Yeah.
So, how much time do they get, then?
I've been giving them 21 days because the postal service can take up to 14 days to deliver those certified letters. So, you know, if they don't get it till that day 14, you know, and if I say you've got 14 days to do something, well, you know, they may not get that letter till...
It's already too late?
Yeah. Well, that's, so I've actually extended those dates on when there's something...
Assuming you don't hear anything back, then what's the next step?
Looking more at a letter to see if, a letter to try to see if I can get something out of them. Because structurally-wise, I don't think the house is in the shape where it needs to be torn down.
Really?
Yeah. It just, they need to do maintenance on it and get it, you know, get it secured, and just get the porch fixed, you know, that, those kind of things done. Because, you know, I'm not, you know, looking at roof-wise, I see nothing where, you know, it's had water just pouring into it when we get heavy rain. That's going to be rotting the structure.
Yeah. Part of the Blight program is it's not about tearing down buildings always. It's about tearing buildings. So, this is a good example of one where I believe, Jim, the Blight funds, I know are focused on property or building removal. But we should have a position on what we're going to do to force property upkeep.
Well, I think if one just needs repair, it really falls under a different ordinance, right? On litter and so on and so forth.
Well, not necessarily. An unsafe building is where you can use self-help. An unsafe building can require a tear-down, but it can also require other improvements, too. So, all of that's under the unsafe area that does allow self-help. It's your Blight ordinance that only allows, doesn't allow self-help. You can just fine it and do that when it's just something that is trashy. But the bill is not unquote unsafe by those criteria.
So, your letter said it could be called unsafe, correct?
Yes.
But the remedy does, it falls short of tear-down?
Yes. I did not say nothing, there's nothing in it about tearing it down. I just mentioned things that I'd seen wrong or, you know, things that need to be addressed, is what I had put in the letter. And so, I guess, basically, my next, the next step would be, is a letter that would say, you know, you need to be, you know, get the back door fixed and make it secure. Get the porch fixed, you know, the things that, instead of saying it has to be tore down...
Give them some specifics.
Yeah, the remedy portion of it. I mean, and that's where the self-help, usually that comes into play with the town doing it until it gets to that extreme of tearing it down. I'm sure, even though legally you could, the other remedies in far as putting on a new porch, you could self-help that and, you know, go and put that on somebody's porch. It'd be a little odd, but that you could do. But it sounds like, so you haven't actually declared it unsafe yet? You've just given that preliminary letter? Well, then the next one is finding it unsafe and declaring what they have to do as the remedy. And then, if they don't do that, then the town can decide whether you want to try to do something on the town's sake and add that to their taxes, or just fine them from that point on.
So, I think if they come back before the next meeting, if there's nothing happen, then we need to go forward saying it's unsafe and...
And then define some remedies, possibly.
Let's make sure we follow up. And then we have a new complaint on 502 East Main Street. That's come in, and it's not the first complaint on that property, though.
Yeah. What I, I was hoping she would, I had sent her a message with the name of somebody to maybe what would come in. Because she had gotten a bunch of stuff drug out of the backyard and left it alone on the road street there. And it's, the trash man's not going to pick it up. And so, I had sent her the number of Troy to see if, you know, that maybe he would come with, you know, that part of the Main Street group to help get rid of it.
Which we've done before. We've picked up there before.
And that. And I talked to Troy last week. He's not heard nothing from her. So, I want to try and give her a call to say, "Hey, have you..." And say, you know, "If you cannot get ahold of somebody to get rid of this, then I will be sending you another fine."
Yeah. That's what you're going to have to do.
Yeah.
How much stuff is there? I mean...
I mean, it's not a ton of stuff. It's just like there's...
Couple of pickup trucks going into...
Oh, probably not even that.
Go to the transfer station.
I don't know. It's...
I bet there's a pickup truck.
Yeah. There's probably about a pickup truck, but I wouldn't say that...
But not just that. I mean, there's weeds growing everywhere.
Yeah. The property generally isn't...
It needs straightened up. And they've had an open fire in the back and so on and so forth. It's just...
And, you know, to me, it's a place, you know, just from the conversation I've had with her, you know, I think it's more than what she can take care of. You know, her best, to me, I think, you know, she, her best would be...
I feel certain the Carrying for Cambridge group would help her if all it takes is a call.
Yeah. And that's what I'm going to, you know, express that to her. I said, "You know, that's what this group is for, is to help people that need help." So, like I said, that's what, you know, what I'm looking at with that one there.
So, next meeting, if there's not there, I assume you're going to have another fine for it.
Yep. We'll go by there, too. Move there together.
That's all of them, right?
Yeah.
Yep. And we've already talked about the Front Street properties. And then, the other one was discussion that we tabled from the previous meeting about charging tree services for commercial businesses to use the burn pile at the cemetery. Did you come up with what you thought that would be?
You know, the last meeting, you know, I said, you know, we got to be charging at least $25 a load, you know?
What do you constitute a load? Pickup truck, trailer?
Trailer.
Well, yeah, what, a trailer? Because most of the commercial people that come up there got a big, a dump trailer is what they've got. You know, and I didn't know, you know, what, you know, the rest of your guys' thoughts are. Do we need to charge more than 25? But I don't know.
And would it be the process of when they come to get the key, they're asked a question of this is for refuse or whatever, yard material outside of the city?
Just because, you know, I can, you know, when you, when, you know, when that was started dumping, you know, where, you know, Michael, when he was there, he started where, you know, two weeks in the spring, we had picked, the town would go, "If you put your limbs up by the street, we pick them up." Well, that, okay, there wasn't hardly nothing there in those two weeks. When I, you know, pick up one or two, look, you know, piles somewhere. Well, then a month later, you know, it's getting calls, he was getting calls about, "Hey, I just picked up a bunch of limbs. You guys pick them up. You'll get..." It was just, and so, Michael just then made it available where they could come and get the key and that. Them town residents could take limbs that they pick up out of their yard up there and dump them. Well, it got to be where now it's, you know, having a tree removed in their yard or whatever, and the whole tree is being dumped there. And so, that part is just, it's gotten out of hand, you know?
Yeah, that pile's huge now.
So, I think as if it's out of town or a commercial service, it's more like George.
Well, I think last time you talked about that you wouldn't even allow it out to... First of all, that the load had to come from in-town property.
Yes, it has to come, it's supposed to come from in-town.
And number two, if it was just an individual resident doing it, there'd be no charge. But if it was from somebody bought or hired that was taking that load there, then there would be X amount. And that's what that X amount, I didn't know what to put in the ordinance.
I'm already at 25, and it's better than what we've been getting. It's nothing. And we actually limit out-of-town people from dumping. Because do people come from outside the city limits to get the key?
We don't allow it.
Yeah, they're not allowed it down. You know, and it's something I'll try to, I'm going to try to monitor is, somebody dumps a tree up, I'm going to want to know. You know, they're saying, they're saying it's from in-town, who's? And I can go look to see if that person had a tree cut down.
Yeah, what property it was.
You know, to make sure they're not bringing something in from something or doing up in there.
Now, it has to be some enforcement.
Purging or somewhere else.
Maybe if it's a commercial company, they'll have to give us an address where the debris came from.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then where do, if we do that and we write a receipt, where do you guys want it to go? Put into what fund?
I don't know. Well, since that costs are part of the town employees doing the work, they have to start the fire, they have to run the equipment, they have to get the diesel for the moniker.
Yeah, we incur a cost with...
Yeah, there's a cost for your group, extra cost for your group to do it. Because, I mean, seriously, the pile is bigger than this building.
Oh, it gets huge out there, yeah. You see it from space.
I don't know if that could be a possibility, but it could be...
I think we could go into the general fund.
General fund would be...
Because that's where most of the waste comes from.
Sounds good. Well, I don't know.
So, is everybody okay with $25?
I'm okay with that.
I will write something up there for next meeting.
Going into the general fund?
Processed and managed, or just...
Well, no, just general fund. That's where the money goes. What I'm writing up is the new fee, a fee scheduling requirement as far as who can do this.
Okay. Everybody in agreement?
Yep.
Awesome. Anything else you might want to add?
Not on that. The only other thing that we talked about at the last meeting, too, I think, was it would pass on charging, increasing the...
Yep, that's next on the electrical...
And that is going to be, I've been trying to, I want to mirror what was in the county, and because at the end of the year, so busy in our firm, I've not been able to discuss that length with the county attorney. So, I will have that something for you at next meeting.
We'll table that next. And going on to new business, looks like we have a couple donations from Miller Wood Specialty. $500 donation to the fire department, and $500 to the police department. And I'll take a motion to accept those donations.
I'll make a motion, we accept the two donations for $500 to the fire department and police.
Second.
All right. Have a motion of second to accept those donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And thank you, Miller Wood Specialty, for those. And then, going on to, we have three resolutions to move some funds from into the rainy day fund.
We did that last year for the first time. We have, we can, until 2025, we can take 15% of the unused appropriations that have enough money in them that we could transfer into rainy day. So, I came up with $6,284.71 from the general fund that I could transfer into the rainy day. And then, that would be one resolution. I have to write three different checks, so I just, so I made three different resolutions.
Let's start there and get a motion to approve that transfer.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Resolution 3 dash 2023 for $6,284.71.
And I did it as 23 just because of the, to get it out of the budget of 23.
Because of the budget of 23, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one?
The next one is $7,854.04 from the MVH. That was leftover, and that will go in the rainy day fund as well.
I'll make a motion, we accept Resolution 4 dash 2023, transferring $7,854.04 from the MVH to the rainy day.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then last is from the Edit Fund, $2,954.04.
Sure. I have a problem with that. Why are you even doing that with Edit? Edit's on the hook, and it continues on and actually you have more flexibility with that than you even would in your rainy day fund.
I just did it just because state board of accounts said that I could do it. I just did that, yeah, just so that...
There's really no rationale for it, but...
Yeah, we don't have to. We can...
Just maintain the Edit Fund?
Just maintain the Edit Fund. That's what, and for years, we never spent almost everything. We have the Edit Fund's been growing, which just gives you more Edit Funds to use in future years. So, I'm not really sure why...
I'm okay with that. That's why I put that one last, because if I have to erase that one, I can.
So, if she doesn't do anything, it just stays there? So if she doesn't do anything, it just stays there, we don't have to take any action.
Yeah.
You're right.
Just leave that.
Yeah, let's keep that one on, good, thanks Bob.
Sure.
Okay, so I need you guys to sign this.
Thanks Bob. Okay, reports from committees, boards, and commissions, Ken, you want to start?
Yeah, the only thing I've really got, just a little bit of update, should be, I talked to Luke with Choice One Engineering just before Christmas, and we should be advertising this month for the community crossings grant for, making the bids for people, people to do the paving this spring. And then I did also want to, part of what you guys had asked me to do, and you know, getting those prices on teardown, I also had, the same guy gave me a price on what, you know, what he would charge to tear the house down by the liquor store. And he wanted, just to give us an idea of what we're looking at when it comes time to that, and he had given me a price of seventeen thousand five hundred, is roughly what he's, he was looking at, what it would cost to tear that one down. So like I said, and I had another guy, I called a couple other, I called one other guy, I not heard from him, but I did get a call from another guy that had, you know, read in my paper and all that, and he was, he's supposed to be gonna give me a price just to, was gonna give me a price to, like I said, see how close these are on what somebody else would do, but I never did get nothing in from him. But, but in I, in the conversation, what I told him, I said, once we know about this program and how everything's gonna work, I said, when we get to the point to where, okay, we're gonna tear them down, but then, then we advertise bids, you know, tell them we're taking bids for tearing these properties down, but homes down.
Okay.
And that, and then, I guess the other thing, I just want to say, I did wanna, I guess, thank you guys for, like, making Mike that contact first, because there are times I, you know, it's like, and so, and with me and Mike being able to meet once a month, discuss things, I think that'll help, help out enormously.
I'm gonna say, I'll help you out, and if you need help on, if you need to be two places at one time, just let me know. I'm free most of the time, so...
Good.
I'm busy doing something, but not very important.
That's working out.
That's, that's all I had.
Jeff?
Okay, we had a pretty good year with the Christmas lights, we had fifty-two hundred dollars that we put in the fund for lights this year. Liked the board about getting cameras in the park though, we had a lot of vandalism this year, we lost a lot of money on lights that they just got destroyed, they actually pulled one out and we caught it before it went down the river, pulled a whole eight-foot piece, it was a seventeen hundred, seventeen thousand dollar piece, they tried to throw in the river. Plus, they've also tore up stuff, one of the Frisbee Golf, they pulled it out of the ground, and they're working hard on destroying the stuff in the park. We need to get a good camera system over there and try to be able to protect our, our investments.
I think we're gonna have to get cameras.
It's really, it's really got, it was really terrible. And it wasn't the loss we could report because a little money here, a little money there, you know, it wasn't something we could take, okay, we had this loss, an insurance loss, but it's...
I, I also fished a piece of playground equipment out of the river, so...
So, yeah, we need to, I'd rather start wearing a proactive, get something done before we get us a lot more damage.
Can we put together a bid for a cost basis for this?
If anybody knows about that kind of security stuff, that wouldn't, you know, how to...
And we do have a couple groups in town that could help maybe with that.
Yeah, cameras.
There are cameras in the park, they probably need to be upgraded, they've been there a long time, probably ten, twelve years.
Well, two years ago, when we had the fountain tipped over, we could see a kid did it, we could see it was a kid, I mean, you couldn't... They're unrecognized, it was an older camera system and they're not...
We, we actually, Sherry and I had somebody come and give us a price on cameras, and you don't want to know the cost of that, so... It was almost fifty thousand dollars to basically put it back like we already have it. Obviously, there'd be better cameras, better DVR and that kind of thing, but...
It's the recording that's the issue.
Exactly, we're moving forward on this, you know, the first, they should still park, and, you know, we get a lot of damage in there with the stuff that they're looking to put in.
The other issue I think we face is when the Christmas lights are there, and they power them down at night, it kills power to the whole park. You lose the DVRs when there's no power to it, so that's something we need to look at to try to correct remedy of that, because once the power's out, there's no cameras.
Could we work this into the playground budget potentially?
There's money in the park, but I think, you know, fifty-nine.
No, I, but I meant the for, the project you're working on for the playground improvement.
Possibly.
Or donations or...
We probably should start with getting, getting the, I don't know where the quotes came from previously.
Could we work that into a quote for the, for the piece that's going to be done, you know? Also, there's no cameras on the east side of the park, at the time we installed the ones we have, it was gonna be basically impossible to do that the way we, way we did it, but, so there's no cameras on the east side of the river. Today, that might be possible because things have changed, but, you know, certainly look at it.
Maybe we get a contact back from Dwayne Foltz.
Where we might be able to combine it in is, so part of the help is, is adding Wi-Fi to the park, so Wi-Fi will make it easier to...
There actually was Wi-Fi there at one time, I don't believe that it works now, because we actually could access the camera from our computer in our car during the shift, but it's, you know, that's been years back, so... Again, the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues is when you turn the power off, there's no power. So we're gonna have to try to figure something out on that, I don't know why, when they originally wired all that, it was made that way, but the cameras were there before the lights were, but...
We should slice that out. Mm-hmm, just hardwired in.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a way that they can do it, but I'm not electrician by any means.
Debbie, that's probably something the park committee will have to do.
Yeah, I think we need to get into that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Flip that to the park committee and see if they can come up with recommendations.
I know. More begging.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard?
I sent you all an email with our call totals for last year, just for the paper, it's, took three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine calls. I don't know if any of you have any questions on any of that, I sent the detailed report to each of you, I guess you all got it. Out of that, we had four hundred and thirty-seven of those calls were in Dublin, so that's included.
How many?
Four hundred and thirty-seven. Twelve percent. Last year, we were thirty-five, forty-three total, I would attribute some of that to being full staff for the better half of last year. We were, we were short-staffed for several years early, and then last year in June, we finally got back to full staff, so having that extra guy does make a difference. So I, I would attribute some of that increase to that, but...
Well, I'm gonna say, on that topic real quick, and I, I sent you an email, Jeff, too.
Right.
I think, I think I'm gonna be working with the fire department, and I don't know if that's been announced yet, how the commissioners are gonna work, but, but I think we should do data, some work to figure out where your biggest issues are, where your biggest issues are, and then here are planning for future funding around those things, just use the data for what it's worth, so you've got a lot of great, you know, everything you do, you got more of this happening than this happening, well, where do you need training, you need it over here, not over here, so we could help with that, same with the...
Maybe we should have, maybe we should meet some, like parks would have occasional meetings that I'm discussing.
I would like, I think, when the other commissioner is named, I think we should do that, yes.
We took, back to this, we took a hundred and seventy K's reports, opposed it as opposed to a hundred and sixty-eight last year, so that was pretty close. We did fifty-three accident reports, we only did thirty-four last year, so that was slightly higher this year. I think we took a couple that were out of the city limits to help the county out, so that was probably part of the increase with that, so... I don't know, if any of you guys, anybody have any questions on any of that, or...
Is that known by the public?
Generally, we put it, it's generally in the paper.
You do put on it?
Yeah.
That's important.
I haven't given it to Millie yet, but I will.
It's important the town knows.
Sure. We posted, generally posted on...
What you do as service organizations for their safety.
It's on our Facebook page usually.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get a copy from L A and Susan.
One other thing I had was, with the staffing that we have, the, our fifth man was hired as a temporary, knowing that he's gonna go somewhere else eventually, I think that time's getting closer. I would like to have council's permission to just start a process, a hiring process, so we're kind of ahead of the curve, that doesn't mean we're hiring anybody, just to get, get ready. I, I think he'll probably be gone in the next couple of months, and the process will take probably that long, so...
We budgeted for five for the year, didn't we?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a problem.
Do we need a motion for that or anything, do we?
Just start across those.
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion, I just, if everybody's in agreement with that, we'll, we'll get started on it, so...
All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thanks Bob.
Well, Sherry called today, reminded me that we probably need to do the fire protection contracts, if you want to do them tonight, I didn't, because we just talked in the day, there are the standard contracts, what we do every year, with Jackson Township, East German Town, and Mount Auburn, Jackson Township being at fifteen thousand five hundred a year, Mount Auburn being fourteen hundred a year, and East German Town at three thousand per year.
So this is for the three towns, right?
One township, one township and two towns.
Jackson Township, Pershing.
Right. So they're all just staying the same?
They were all staying the same this year, yeah, if you wanted to approve them, you can approve them one at a time, you could approve them together, or you can table it until next month, but I did, I had about an hour to do it, I went ahead and typed them up this afternoon.
I think, since they're all staying the same, we could probably entertain a motion to just approve all three at the same time.
If you do that...
I'll make that motion, we approve all of the fire contracts.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
I'll just sign and organize it, I've made it for all the new council members, signature, and then the only thing else I had was just asking about, this is when we sometimes will do appointments for all the different commissions and things, and I didn't know if you...
I have it, you're right.
Okay, and then that, I have nothing else than what we've already talked about.
All right. So I went and talked to Sherry about the different commissioners and such, I do have some recommendations.
Oh, jumping the guns, sorry. It was timely.
So Jeff Martus was fire, and he's outgoing, I'm gonna recommend Jim King go in there. The police with Steve Sora, I think I'll jump into that spot. If Gary can do the water commissioner, which is where I was at, Gary, I'll still be involved in that, because I'm highly involved in the meetings and stuff, so... There's also a water member committee, which I'll stay on. Then there's the, the committees, the fire was Jeff and Steve. We're gonna keep Jim on there, and Mike, would you be willing to do that?
Yep.
The police was Steve and Debbie, Debbie, if you'll stay on there, I'll jump in on that. Street was Mike and Debbie, do you want to just stay on that, or, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's okay.
Yes, it's public work.
Water will be Gary and myself. And then refuse, Sherry pretty much handles those contracts. Parking cemetery, Debbie and Mike will stay the same, ADA coordinator, Ken, would be the same. Benefits, Sherry and myself, and new industrial, Ken, Rich, and myself. So that's my recommendation, I don't know if anybody wants to shuffle anything around from that. Is everybody comfortable with it?
Gary's water, street, what do you, cemetery.
Parking cemetery. Parking cemetery.
And Mike is street.
Fire department, street.
Go.
I do.
I don't think we need to do anything on that, too, we need a... And then there are a couple appointments that need to be made, but I haven't got to that, because I wasn't pressed it yet, so... I'll try to make a recommendation for the next meeting on those, and there's only a couple, actually, most of them are continuing appointments, so...
Not several people in here that maybe, they come to meetings, maybe they might be...
Yes, maybe they will, maybe they'll hear from me.
Yeah.
And, all right, we'll hear from Mike, do you have anything else?
I think I'm good right now.
Debbie?
Our cemetery meeting's gonna be the sixteenth of January, I did send out the emails to everybody. And we are gonna have a parks meeting, I'm not sure when, but wait, it needs to be pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I will let everybody know about that also.
Hey Bob, she said I need to put it in the paper on the annual cemetery meeting.
Yeah, should have probably gone in before, and because that's gonna be an annual meeting and a board meeting, so there is a notice that could go in, although we, you know...
It's the sixteenth.
So we can hit it in, see if next Wednesday, but we can still get in for next Wednesday's paper?
It was seventeenth.
Which would be the day after.
We already sent it.
Yeah, so you have to be able to get it into the little paper. So, it's not, not legal required, it's a nice fee to do for anybody that comes, we've never had anybody other than the...
I could do a reach alert, I could send that out on that reach alert.
Yeah, you could do that.
I could do that, yeah.
Jim King, do you have anything?
Nope.
I have.
Carrie?
Nope.
I got one more thing, Richard said that, well, we, we were paying a hundred dollars on your dues.
Yes.
And now they're two hundred dollars for dues, I didn't have a motion to change that, but he thought it was brought up at budget time, but I couldn't find anything on it, do you remember, Bob?
I don't, I remember talking about that.
I remember talking about it, but I don't remember what...
Where they, there was gonna be an increase, and that we were going to, that, that we were okay with that, that, you know, a hundred dollars, what per...
So it's two hundred dollars?
Yeah, but I mean a hundred dollar increase.
Straight, yeah.
Yeah, it was a hundred dollars for, actually increased in the last year, and we went ahead and paid our own.
I think we did, we talked about that in, I don't know...
He thought it was budget, it had nothing, nothing, it wasn't on my tapes, I couldn't find it.
Not a regular, I don't think.
So I'll need a motion for that, so I can pay that.
I'll make a motion that we pay the increase for the...
FOP dues.
FOP dues.
As it's a one-time, in here, once a year, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the increase for FOP dues, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? That is passed, Sherry, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
We need you guys to stick around and sign these, otherwise I'll accept.
Hey, real quick, I just wanted to let council know, Okra, you mentioned phase one of the water project was closed out, Okra has monitored that project, they came out and went through all the paperwork with Sherry and I, that project is done, no findings, Sherry, nice job, there was a lot of work that went into that, so I just wanted to make sure the council officially knew that.
Great, thanks, and thanks, Sherry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry.
My pleasure.
With the good news, we'll entertain a motion for a German cemetery. All in favor?
Yay.